All right, this is the City of Avondale State's Georgia Board of Mayor Commissioners. This is June twenty-six, twenty twenty-four. This is our work session. It is now seven seventeen. I would like to call the meeting to order. Uh, we have an agenda before us to have a motion to adopt.
I'm moved.
That was Mayor Potem.
I got it. Change.
Yeah.
Um, can we amend the agenda to remove the public works vehicle replacement discussion?
All right. Well, there was only one motion made, so scratch that. Okay. When we get started, uh, I have, do I have a motion to remove item number five, public works vehicle replacement discussion from the agenda?
Same way.
That was Mayor Potem. Do I have a second?
Second.
That was Commissioner Rady. Uh, all of them say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. So, uh, we now have a meeting agenda before us to have a motion to adopt.
So moved.
That was Commissioner Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Rod, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, let's get started with item number three, traffic calming discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, before I turn the floor over to Assistant City Manager Carl for a fun, yeah, riveting presentation that I'm sure we are all excited to hear, given our, our lengthy meeting tonight. No, anyway, she's prepared a fantastic presentation with, uh, you know, several, um, displays for you. But first, I want to just say that, uh, the reason we're having this discussion tonight uh, is a result of kind of two merging concerns or fronts. Uh, one being, um, you know, the, the, the construction beginning on two seventy-eight and the potential impact that construction will have on all other thoroughfares, uh, in the city, especially those in the residential area that could potentially be more utilized for, um, traveling through the city than they otherwise would if that construction were not happening. The second, uh, issue, uh, that, uh, we have, um, been addressing over the past couple of years, um, is, um, just, you know, the need to expand modality and enhance safety uh, for all means of transportation through the residential area. Uh, you know, we are a, like, a close-knit community, um, that, uh, gets out and about, riding bicycles and walking and golf carts and, 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 you know, all those means of transportation. And, uh, we want to ensure, uh, moving forward, uh, that everyone who is using those modes of transportation feel like it's a safe environment for them to do so. Uh, so that being said, uh, we have, um, you know, we, we enlisted our favorite consultant, uh, Marco Ancheta from, uh, Lordet Sargent, um, who has performed, you know, uh, the bulk of our urban design and planning, uh, work in the past to assist with developing a traffic calming plan, uh, as a result of those two, uh, converging topics. And, uh, we, um, have, uh, enlisted, uh, feedback, uh, from the general public. We held an open house about a month ago to, to preview this very item. Uh, and from all of Marco's work and the feedback we've received and the issues that we've identified as a staff, um, Shannon has now put together, uh, a presentation with recommendations to the board, uh, to assist with the calming efforts throughout the residential area. So Shannon, it's all yours. We're putting a timer on it. You have three minutes.
Really?
Yeah.
Lucky me. Traffic speeding in the neighborhood has been an issue that has been on this agenda and been a complaint since, I, I saw it in twenty-ten. I saw studies in twenty-fifteen. This is not new. This is, it's just not a new issue. Um, it's something that's been around for a long time and the complaint is the same and the response is the same. So we're going to try something different. Let me address a couple of things on the front end. What we hear is people are speeding. People are speeding. People are speeding. People, based on all of the traffic studies that have been done, including those that meet all the G dot standards, people are not exceeding the speed limit. Now, there may be the occasional person that does, but they're not. That doesn't mean that if somebody is going the speed limit and you were a pedestrian or cyclist, it doesn't feel as if, you don't feel as if that they are, um, going too fast. That is a totally and completely reasonable assumption. But what it, but what we can't do is, because it feels too fast for you, then to ask the police to go enforce something where they're not breaking the laws. So that's a starting, that's a starting point. It is challenging and difficult, as you guys know from all the conversations we've had, to reduce the speed limits to a level that we can actually implement or enforce against. We are working towards that on a couple of corridors. We have a solution I'm going to talk about today that would, would allow us to reduce those speeds even further on Kensington and South Avondale to allow us to, and allow us to enforce. It's a process, but to allow us to, to enforce. The other thing that I hear is, well, there were more police officers in the neighborhood giving tickets. I asked Harry to do a comparison of, in a five or ten years back in comparison to date. We're not giving more tickets in the residential area. It's about the same. Are we seeing some, he's seen, he's trying to pick, I'm speaking for Harry at this point, but he's picking up the enforcement of parking and he's picking up the enforcement on running through stop signs, starting with a warning system. But in terms of one-to-one comparison, it's not like we were suddenly, we're suddenly not enforcing traffic and we were before. The, the data does not show that and does not demonstrate that. I've also, or well, we used to put a car out there, um, a dummy car, and that would slow people down. The evidence again did not show that. It did not show that when we put a dummy car out there, that people did anything different than when it was. We ran it with and without the dummy car. Putting the dummy car is also a liability because now you're putting a car where someone might want to break in or take all the expensive stuff that's in those cars. So I may weigh that out because those are things that have been discussed. Now we're looking at what else can we do and what have other communities done in order to try to address this, this need for people to go slower and to maybe deter people from using this as a primary path in rap? And there's been some concern that this is going to be exacerbated, that our cut-through traffic will be exas- exacerbated while we're under construction with the complete street project. So we wanted to kind of try to get ahead of it, give you some options to consider. We did, you're not talking to me. Um, sorry, was distracted by that.
What's that?
Nothing. Patrick was talking to somebody else that didn't have anything to do with me. Um, so I want to walk you through, uh, what are, what some of the suggestions are that we have. We have taken an approach that these are, we want to do some things to slow and deter the track, traffic. This is low-cost efforts, low-cost improvements, things that I would consider temporary, things that we can test. If we like them or you like them, then you can move forward with things that are more permanent. This gives us a, an avenue and an opportunity to understand whether or not they, um, whether they will work and how they're, they are perceived. They have been done in many cities, many cities, and done effectively. Patrick already mentioned that we brought this into a public meeting. Some of the biggest things we're doing is making sure stop signs are visible, adding stop signs, adding crosswalks or adding stop bars. Um, I will tell you the biggest feedback that we got from the folks that attended the in-person meeting and heard the presentation was more, 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 more. So they added collectively over thirty additional crosswalks within the community itself. We have recorded that in the overall map that I have for the city. And so you'll see that, and that is predominantly what we, we've done in large parts of the corridor. Our focus in what we would consider phase one would be running from Kensington through South Avenue. And the reason for that is because that would be the natural point at which people were cutting through. There are also places within the city where it's set up currently to be more racetrack-like. Um, I'm going to start with, Corinne, can you pull up the? This is the overall map. You see it over here for those of you that would like to, um, would like to see a bigger version. I believe you guys have a miniature of your version in your hands. I will print them bigger if you would, would like, but three different options here. This one, this map here, um, reflects all the additional crosswalks that were added during the community conversation and, and meetings. We have identified, um, a couple of places and you can see that with little tags over here. We're in the core neighborhood. We would, in phase one, add stop bars. I want to get your feedback, by the way, um, on, uh, the Bridle Pass. We've gotten a lot of feedback and desire to do, to do crosswalks at the Bridle Pass. I will tell you that the Bridle Pass, we can put crosswalks in here. It's probably not a transport, traffic calming mechanism, but it would, um, and it also doesn't lead to ADA accessibility, but you know, it's downhill. It might, it would be popular. That's, that is my observation on that. Corinne, can you flip to the next one? Um, these are a couple of just, this is what I would call an idea board, so that you understand more or less what we're talking about. Um, you're, I'm going to mention something called the Bike Corral. You can see that up in the corner, uh, under amenities. It's just an area where you can park a bike and it's painted. It's pretty straightforward and pretty simple. Um, you'll notice a kind of following down on these amenities, there's some, uh, near, some ground murals, and I'll talk about those and the opportunities for where those might be if we were to move forward. If you move over from there, you see, um, a couple of things. Uh, you see planters. We have a limited number of planters and I believe Kathy mentioned that she did not want us to put colorful planters like Decatur. We didn't hear, because we don't want to have to maintain them. It's our nightmare. Um, but one of the things that we have to think about is how we have some movable vertical mechan, you know, method, because if something's right on the ground, people don't see it. And so we're, we, we do have a few limited ones, a few of these in the mix, and we're trying to figure out where and whether we can manage it. We get it. We got to manage it. We also have these things that are called, um, wave delineators. This is the exact same idea. We're looking for a mechanism to indicate to the drivers that their field of vision is much narrower. And I don't, we want to limit the number of planters. Post, or the little post bollards are so ugly. We were looking for something more artistic. We can use bollards. We're looking at more creative kind of bollards. The bollards, you know, I, I realize that people didn't know what a bollard was. I'm thinking you guys do, but they're, you know, the, the things we have to park.
Yeah.
Um, there are all kinds of different ones of those, all kinds of those. The ones we have in the park are super expensive because you lock them, you move them, all kinds of stuff. Um, if they're that sturdy, they tend to be expensive, but there are some other alternatives that, that we can play with. Your, the sticks that have little reflector in them, those are also bollards. It's just, they're ugly. So we're trying to kind of balance this issue of finding ways to put a vertical element without spending, um, a ton of money. Bike Boulevard. The Bike Boulevard is a mechanism for us to be able to pull the speed limits down to twenty and enforce them. And that's something we haven't been able to do. And so we have looked at this South Avondale, um, Kensington corridor through that lens, um, with the aim of trying to get it to a place where it's a natural bike corridor. It's safe and most, many of our cyclists have responded that that is something they would love to see. Um, it's nice. It's easy. It's an easy ride and it also enables us to deal with speeds. Um, I think there's a, really, the, there's a lot of markings that you'll see in the street. So those are the big things that I think you should think about as we're walking through this project. I have those in a bigger version if you want to, um, walk through those. Let's move to the next one. This is the priority corridor and the reason is because people can go from Kensington, race all the way through and get out to, to South Avondale and onto two seventy-eight or vice versa. We have suggested that we prioritize this area first as a way of more immediately, um, closing, I mean, slowing the traffic. Right, I think I'm going to get you for the folks out here that are not going to be able to see this. How about moving these over and you kind of walk me through, walk with me with the, through this? You guys, I will show them on the screens. I do get that it's hard. I'm hoping that you guys can see enough on your, this, on your, on that, but Lily's going to walk through this with me as we go through this and she can point, um, she can point while, while I walk us through this. Yes, but Kristen would know it back when she's there.
Yes, Kristen definitely knows.
Okay, so, Corinne, so this is at the, at the, so these, so the way you should read these is the first one, it goes one, two, then you're going to see three. As we move through it, these connect to one another. So the top image, you can see at the very top, that's, that is North Avondale. And then where you see the little medium in the center, that is where North Avondale connects to South Avondale. So the intersection there. The changes at that intersection are not part of this project. They are part of the North Avondale project. These are the changes we will make as part of that project. If you remember, if you go out there today, it is a straight shot. I mean, people can just bullet. And they do. And so we're trying to deal with that. Now, we have limitations because of all kinds of things, but we're pulling that curb up so that it is a tighter turn and pulling and narrowing that entrance there. Now, that's all part of the project we'll do. I'm guessing we'll get to that about ten months, but that's all part of the other project to help address that same issue of how do you stop the bullet, you know, people just bursting through there or coming out and coming back through. You'll see, um, that we've added stop signs. So consistently, there are stop signs everywhere and when you look over on the bigger plan, you'll see that they are red and blue to indicate whether there are new stop signs or existing. In every situation, we would look at not only new, but whether the existing sign is clear and visible. We're adding stop bars. We're looking for any way to indicate to the driver to stop and visual ways in order to do that. So we are adding a lot of stop bars, really have either existing signs or new signs. I've gotten some feedback that if we make this, and this would be our Bike Boulevard, that if we made this a Bike Boulevard, the, the cyclists won't stop, or they probably won't. But the cyclists aren't going, starts, you know, they'll probably do a rolling stop coming through there, but they will still like this better. And I'm not trying, we're not trying to deter them or slow them down.
Can you elaborate more on like, just the Bike Boulevard concept?
Bike Boulevard, um, two things. The Bike Boulevard allows us to drop that speed to twenty, which, uh, which we'd like to. It gives an, an easy alternative and safe alternative that people can, are not in the travel, travel lanes to get through that, that corridor. We will have a path system, but even a ten-foot path on, on, um, North Avondale.
Sure, it's, it's.
It's a path. It's not, you know, it's a path. It's not a, um, it's not, you know.
A dedicated bike.
It's not a dedicated bike lane. You can be on it, but I would not consider it most, you know, you get the non-spandex bikers and the spandex bikers. So if we divide them back, the spandex bikers will not be on the path. That's kids, you know, that kind of, you know, really low-speed kind of things. Um, with Kristen, who, we got a couple of folks in the office that bike to work, um, every day, making me feel guilty that I don't, but, um, this is a path that they're, that they would, that they would really gravitate to.
Sure, I mean, there's no cons to even do, do this at all, right?
I mean, I'll walk you through the, we're, what we're doing and I don't think there's, I personally don't think there's a con in making it a Bike Boulevard. You'll have to give me feedback on how, whether you're okay with what we're doing or what we're thinking. The Bike Boulevard in and of itself requires us to do some things to make it a Bike Boulevard.
Okay, so there's, okay.
So.
Let me ask you a quick question.
Mm-hmm.
That, uh, cross path, you know, the one across, where you can cross the street and get this, that'll remain?
Uh, yes, not only will it remain, but it will be enhanced.
Okay.
So we're widening that cross, we're widening that area. So there's, right now, there's a break in the habia hedges and there's a crosswalk that will be widened and, um, to enable even safer, safer crossing there, since that's considered a major, major cross point.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Is that where the golf cart crossings?
That will be where we're looking at the golf cart crossing, which will, again, it's a much wider crossing and for the golf carts and I hear a lot about golf carts. Please follow the rules. That's my comment.
Yeah.
It, it would be a wider crossing to accommodate, but we are not looking for golf carts to go up and down North Avondale. They will not, oh, you get across and then you're stuck, you know, one way or the other. Um, you're, you're seeing, um, a couple of striped crosswalks in this image. It's pretty easy for us to put in a striped crosswalk, however, ADA regu- regulations require that if you put in a crosswalk, you have to have ADA ramps. If you have ADA ramps, you can expect those to be about six thousand dollars. So.
It's a wow.
Budget issue. So, uh, and I, I've talked to, this is, this isn't what, what we consider tactical urbanism or a project in which you're trying out some things. Would we, and there's debate, you know, could you try that and come back and put the crosswalks in? Maybe, but if someone challenges you, you got to put them in or take it out. We have, the few that we have, we either have existing crosswalks or we're, as we go through it, I'll talk about how we may look to budget those, um, within what we're doing or take them out. So that's, that's the balance we're trying to, to make. The second thing that you're going to see on this, besides the, the stop bars and the stop signs are chicanes. I love that word, but most people don't know what it is. Um, the chicane, and, and there are people that love them and there are people that hate them. The chicane is there to give a visual, um, a visual cue to, to motor us. So if you're driving down and you see something here, you go, ooh, need to slow down. And so, uh, it, it makes the road weave a little bit as opposed to just race car track. And you'll see they're strategically placed, so they're the little bump-out things. Now, in other communities, they've already gone with this direction. Decatur, you can see them. Sometimes they're used, they're also designed for stormwater. What we're doing here is paint.
Yeah.
We're painting and then often putting the, the, or suggesting the wave delineator, if not the wave delineator, some sort of bollard. This makes the road, um, a consistent twenty-four feet coming through, but you weave through it so that you slow down. And we're looking for mechanisms to slow you down. The, the, this, I mean, they're, if, the beautiful thing about this with paint is that if you don't like them, you can take them out. You can, if you like them, you might want to move to the next step, which would be to put in curbs and make them a more permanent fixture. So you can, so this allows for some testing, but we do have to get it vertical or it won't work. So something's got to be vertical. Uh, so that's where these wave delineators come in. Um, some people could, would use, uh, planters in this situation. We are trying to avoid that. Um, you know, you could do some bollards, but you know, there's a point where there's a little too much of that, too. So that's what's going on there. That system begins to be really consistent. And when you look at the plan, you see that in the upper, the upper box, there's a little gray box, the whole corridor is a little gray box. That tells you where you are in the, on the corridor. So it's a good mechanism. If we go to the next, um, the next image, it's the same thing. Nothing terribly striking or new about this. Same concepts. You can see it. So it's, I'm going to keep on going.
Yep.
Yes, there, just, I'm just marching down the corridor. Same thing, nothing particularly notable until we get to Clarendon. And this is much more notable. So Clarendon is the lower, it is the beginning of the lower image. Much of this is actually part of the, the two seventy-eight project. So they've already looked at all of this. So we did some things like look at whether or not we could actually take out that, um, that right-hand turn, because it seems like way overkill. And the answer is no, we couldn't. Um, at least not as part of the two seventy-eight project. After that, that project, we can come back and revisit that, but that's where, where it is now. The, the, the little parks, the, um.
Store plazas?
Yes, the plazas. I, I, my, the architects call them pillboxes. They look like little pill, pills, but, um, the, the, the area between those pillboxes is closed off as part of the two seventy-eight project. The lower part of that has a lot less improvements as part of it, but you can see where we've been looking at putting paint and other kind of mechanisms. So this plan shows the little dots are simply paint. They're, they're what we call, uh, pedestrian delineators. It kind of gives the pedestrian an indication as to where to walk. You see some delineator, wave delineators. You see some planters in this area. This is one of the areas that we've looked at planters. And so we are trying to balance where, how much of that we do or don't do. Let me show you. Adrian wants zero. And so we're trying to figure out whether or not we can have any. The box that you see there is, um, is a Bike Corral.
Yep.
And then we're actually showing, uh, because we're on that side of the road. We've got so many people that want to have golf carts. This would be a way for us to incorporate safely golf cart parking, but also you need an epicross with your golf cart. You just park here and walk over. And we're on the other side of this, you know, we're making it a much more pedestrian-friendly alternative. So we've got, um, we're, we've looked at that. Then as you kind of, what you see here is on the striped areas, our whole goal is to try to take these intersections and really narrow them and, um, create, you know, scale back that, um, that, that perspective. And so that's where you see a lot of the striping. So you see at the, the end there, um, at the very tail end, there's kind of an expansion. Now, one of the big moves that we are looking at is taking out that ability to come off of two seventy-eight, off of North Avenue and race this way. So that's an area where if you look at it, both of these areas have been identified. We could, we could also do some murals, community-based murals, kind of in those areas, because it could be a fun way to engage the community and really talk through that. So that's, that's kind of a big part of it. You'll also see that there's some standard car parking along that edge as well. And then as you come further, right on the edge of the plane, you start to see that the, um, kind of the, the paint or the thermoplastic that is kind of on the very edge of that plan. Again, whole goal, kind of keep, narrow, narrow the road, um, scale, you know, scale those intersections back, try to get people to slow down and follow kind of the, the regulations. Keep moving.
Ready?
Yeah, this is similar, you know, we're kind of doing the same thing, kind of scaling back, kind of narrowing those. Those roadways, again, you see um the same sort of things. Where, so on the bottom image, it's more clear, you see this, you see the driveways come up. And you see kind of that white line, so between those driveways, that's that's considered parking. So you would park there for your cars, so we are not eliminating any on-street parking. Those are, we're just delineating kind of the outside edge of that so that we can. So that we can again, kind of create that field of vision, uh where possible to um. To do, to to do mark. The 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 areas for parking and you see we have some sort of visit, vertical element in the corners. And that's a way, again, you know, we're we're stopping you here, you gotta be in the road and this is gonna be for parking. So even if cars aren't there, you're not as a driver thinking that's for you. Okay, so this is one of the biggest, where we got some of the most comments here on this, on the circle. And um Kathy Dupree mentioned this earlier. We've gone through a number of different iterations on how to address this. Circle, and the reason is because it's so wide and people are going every direction imaginable. Um, so and i- it's at the heart of a lot of what we're seeing. We've, there are stop signs in this, so this is not your, so. Around about, you you come up and you go around it. You usually have yield signs and it's fantastic for traffic movement, it works better than stop signs and it works better than traffic lights. So if your goal is to move traffic, this one, this works, but that's not our goal. Our goal is to slow people down. Without stop signs, so let's start with that, the other thing is you can see we've narrowed the field of vision. So that we, at one point, we were looking at closing off one of these sections. Are you looking at an older plan?
I'm looking at something different than.
The what you're seeing on the screen?
Oh, no, I've got the one on the screen, you've got the one, yeah, sorry.
Did you, did you print yours?
I printed mine at home.
This is, this is back to Kathy's comment that she made at the beginning of the meeting, which was. Um, we have looked at a different alternative, which is now posted. That would have closed off one section of this to really. Which which wanted handle the traffic, but we got a lot of feedback, but that was not consistent with the historic character. So we went back and tried a different alternative, and so we worked at a couple of different things, but this is kind of where we landed. Which is protecting that circle, the historic nature of the circle, but then pulling out the corners. With paints and other things to try to make sure, number one, when people do travel on this, they follow the rules of the. Traffic circle and aren't going the wrong direction on the circle, which they do. We also added some stop signs, cause if it's just a traffic stop circle, you don't stop, and that's a problem for pedestrians. So we're adding that, this is a place where we're adding some crosswalks, whether they stay or go may depend on where we land on this whole issue. Of the ramps and the costs, it's it's the crosswalk itself is inexpensive, it's the, it's the the ramp. So that's where we've landed on that, so um we have responded to community feedback by kind of readdressing. The way we were handling this one.
One more question for you, uh why no crosswalk on the north side?
Um, I don't know. I mean, honestly, I almost drew it in, cause I almost drew it in, um but I didn't have time when I saw that it was missing. Um, I think it was just an oversight, but I'm not a hundred percent sure of that, so.
That's a one-way street for one thing.
Well, no, this one is, that is, that's two, all these are two, that's, wait a minute.
I'm just saying, that's one difference, I don't, I think there should be a crosswalk too, I've almost been run over right in there.
But that's also the closest to school, I mean, I don't know how many kids are, but you gotta presume some are, and so.
A lot of traffic going that direction on that one way because of the school.
That's an easy app.
Yeah, so we'll, we're, we're gonna look it off. All four of these, every crosscrosswalk, we've got to go back in, we will absolutely add stop bars. We'll have to go back in and look at crosswalks. Um, we're we're proposing and just assess them from a ramping, the ramp and a budget perspective to see what we can. Come, where we, what we can do, and then we may prioritize a few of them.
So where would the stop signs be, would they be inside, on the circle?
I believe that that's my understanding about how those would be. But they could be in other locations.
They need to be at, at the street, right there.
We think they're gonna be on, after, on the street.
Oh, that's kind of where they are now then, yeah, okay, okay.
I'm not sure why he put those visually there, I think if we read the details, we would see that he's moved them over.
And that's fine, yeah.
Do you guys want people to ask questions at this point, how do you guys wanna handle that? And then, sorry, we'll, we'll come back and we'll flip back through, um. Do you guys have questions before I move to the next one? Okay, keep moving.
I just wanna get through it and move, you know.
So here's, so here's the last section, so I wanna bring your attention to the. The end of Kensington, see that dotted line? Everything going from the dotted line on Kensington to Covington Highway um is controlled by GDOT. So while you have decision-making power over everything past the dotted line, they have approval over everything else. So that portion of the plan. Yes, so that, while we think that that taking out this, what we call that swinging right-hand turn. Kind of tightening this intersection and adding that that striped area on something vertical there to shorten that curve. It's shorten that turning rate makes enormous sense, we can't do it without GDOT's permission. Um, if you move further down, you see kind of the similar kind of approach. Where we're again narrowing that crossing and adding some vertical elements and we're just kind of at this stage. Playing with where and how much of that we we can do or need to do. So. Those are, that's, that's where we are, um. And maybe give, put that in front of you, get your feedback, figure out how you wanna move forward. We have priced out what it would cost to do the. Feedback on what it would cost to paint, for the paint aspect of this project, that doesn't include the vertical elements. Um, we have some numbers on the vertical elements. Of of this, and then we had one quote that also included all of the new stops, or not yet, all the new stop signs. All the signage on our high priority area and um. And so we haven't, we think we will put that in-house, because it was pretty darn expensive. Um, so overall, we're trying to do the um. Do the the hard priority corridor and then a few other things. Um, with a budget of under a hundred thousand, is kind of where we're, what we're looking at, and so. That's, you know, we'll we'll get tighter as we we get in, but I think we wanted to start with. What is, where is your head, what are you thinking? This is kind of where we've landed in terms of how can we address this issue that has been ongoing for so long. And um and address the concerns that you might see. Additional people coming through as we, particularly as we're under construction.
I like that it's temporary and we can see how it works without, without spending too much money or.
Yeah, I mean, and also, I mean, keep in mind, a hundred thousand versus half a mile. Or not half a mile, but um about a mile is eight million. For the, for, you know, so just perspective on how much, I just wouldn't ever cost that, I don't think, but. We are, a hundred thousand is a lot less than.
Yeah.
Than what our capital projects would be if we built, built curves and all that stuff, cause that changes the curvature of the roads, all kinds of stuff.
So does that include the, that doesn't include the vertical elements, though?
The hundred thousand would probably include the vertical.
And what includes the vertical and the signage?
Mm-hmm, how we think we can do, just for that one, for that.
For that, yeah, okay.
We'll do some of it ourselves, um. We'll do some of it ourselves, we're gonna pick and choose some of the vertical, you know, we've got some additional.
Yeah.
We wanted just to start with, are we on the right track? We've gotten some community feedback, how do you guys want us to proceed? We're, we're trying to move it pretty quickly because we know that we started construction on Monday. And so um just wanted to start with you guys and bring us back.
Um, I think Patrick wants to add something, or then I wanna actually. Address how we might proceed.
Okay.
Yeah, real quickly, um, both this item and the next item would, are not budgeted. Um, so that it would require an amendment to the capital program. Uh, if y'all recall, we had some significant savings uh from the Dunwick Drive project. That will redirect to these two items. Um, we'll have to shift sourcing around, uh one of the reasons for that is because we have to have all of our arpa funds. It not spent by the end of twenty-five, but at least budget, uh contracted to be spent by twenty-five. So depending on the direction that we go, um, we'll, I, we'll have to come back and amend the capital program to make that happen. That's, that's it.
Okay.
So, well, good, good, yeah, I just uh two questions before uh we move into what we're going to do. Uh, one of the things I noticed there is that there was no, uh was there any uh consideration given to. Changing some streets to one way or, you know, uh. It rap, you know, in addition to, I think you've achieved the goal of calming the traffic. Uh, but um was there any consideration given to that type of uh change?
We've looked at a couple of things that we did not move forward with, one was, um, and I think you'll hear this, speed bumps. So that's one that we did not move forward with for a lot of different reasons. Bikes hate them, uh fire trucks hate them, um, they're expensive, so it's hard to get them approved, even when you do. Uh, so we, and we got feedback from the community asking us, please don't do that.
Okay.
So that's one of them, then, and the one reason, it's such a tricky thing, because. We take one way, we're impacting not only the people that are coming through, we're impacting all the people that weren't there, so that certainly wasn't at the top of our priority list. Every time I've tried to do a one-way street somewhere, um, I've ended up, we've ended up not going in that direction.
Yeah, I, just to be clear, I didn't, uh, I used one way as an example, but. Uh, what I was wondering was, was there any uh consideration given to uh changing the flow of traffic, rather than just slowing it down?
Um. Not, not. We consider, we we kind of threw it up and said, what can we do?
Right.
And so, um, and what can we do within some sort of a reasonable budget? And and so one ways, um, were, weren't something, so, yes, we looked at a bunch of different things. Things that started on the table, that got moved off of the table, um. But obviously, we ca- we closed off one section, you saw the circle. Originally, we had closed off half the access, cause we were changing the flow of traffic.
Right.
But then got the feedback that no, that wasn't how the community would like us to respond, so we provided a different alternative. So, yes, we've looked at things and at a variety of things, things have evolved over the last few weeks. And then there's some things that just kind of got left on the cutting room floor.
All good, um, so the second question I have is, uh, you didn't speak in, I don't know if there is any. Impact on uh police and fire vehicles uh getting around and, you know, they need to move quickly. I'm just wondering what considerations.
These are, I mean, these are twenty-four, even in their constrained environment, they're twenty-four feet, a highway. And the highway are, lanes are ten feet wide, so. Two lanes on a highway is twenty feet, we will have to look at that carefully and make sure that, I mean, at this level, we're still at concept. But again, we're, we're taking those into considerations as we look at what those turning radiuses are, I believe, I mean. A lot of times we are talking about paint, if they need to drive over them, they.
Thank you, that's good. Um. I know I have a lot of questions, a lot of suggestions, I would prefer to have some time. Separate, uh, I don't know how you guys feel, also just, this is a lot to observe. Yeah, I mean, I think we've all looked at this, do you all want to talk about this separately and then come back next meeting and. Combine our comments, or you wanna keep? When you have questions now, or would you prefer to have sort of one-on-one? I don't want you guys to suffer with my comments for the next hour, so, uh, anyway.
Well, I'll tell you where I am, I mean, I like what I, what you presented here. Um, the only question that I would have is, you know, what what would the phasing look like for doing this? You know, cause I think, I think this is good stuff.
Well, I mean, what we're thinking is phase one. Phase one runs from Kensington, you know, this corridor here. Um, that's phase one, uh with, if you look at my little stickies here, there are a few places where we said add cross. Crossbars, that's what we consider phase one and the hundred thousand. Um, we figure, we figure that out, figure out where that is and then figure out from there what what else we might wanna do. But um, so there, there's. Kind of what I would call a phase two and three, which are maybe other crosswalks. And other stop bars and other things within the community, I would say, let's start with. Phase one and figure out whether it's working, whether we like it, and how we wanna proceed, and then we can start to to budget and. And account for the the future phases from there, um, and that could happen as fast as you guys want it. Pretty fast, I mean, it's not complicated. And so we can move it from there, if it starts to get, those start to get a little more expensive, just because of the darn handicap breaks, so we'll have to take that. Take that, you guys are misbehaving, I heard that way.
I think it would be great if we just gave individual comments to Shannon.
Well, I just, I, I don't know where everybody is, I just. Again, I, I could burn up a good amount of time here this evening, and I think we're tired, um, so. Would you, how do you wanna proceed, I mean, I'm, I'm just suggesting that we all kind of talk with Patrick once a week anyway. Okay, um, yeah, so. And then come back and consolidate those comments, or not necessarily here, make changes, but just say, okay, here's what. A lot of things, here's what Mike thinks, here's what Graham thinks, you know, and.
And you'll still be getting some public comments.
I am getting public comments now, it is, we're gonna, I'm gonna switch out the, the um new that. Graham obviously has an earlier version, that's what's on the website, we're gonna switch out with the newer version that we've, that we've presented today. Um, with that, and so that people can see what those are, and I mean. Yeah, I, I think at this point, um, we're kind of just waiting for you guys to get back to us. On how do you want us to proceed?
Okay, we'll do that.
Yeah, we, we'll do that, okay.
Thank you. Looks great.
So, uh, the next item, Public Works Parking Lot Discussion, yes.
Um. So we kind of, well, the final phase of the Public Works Facility renovation is, uh. Re-doing the parking lot, um, I don't know how often, um, y'all been. Inside the gate of the Public Works Facility lately, but uh the parking lot has taken significant abuse over the course of time from. You know, he- uh heavy vehicles traveling over it. Um, so kind of like the roads that we paved last year where we had to um. Mill and redo, because there was structural integrity issues, the same holds true for the parking lot. We can't just put a layer of asphalt on it, we have to take advantage base and essentially redo it. Um, and so we, we uh. Tried to obtain bids from five different companies, we ended up getting two back. uh from two companies that we've used in the past that we, that we like. Um, Atlanta paving was uh, uh, came back with a, a, a little bit lower cost. Uh, we like them. Uh, we like the materials that they're proposing to use. Um, we're gonna recommend moving forward uh with Atlanta paving. Um, and as I said, we're, you know, we'll have to appropriate funds for that because it's not previously budgeted, but um, given the savings we, we had from Dunwick, it made sense to add this to the capital program because um, it's just, it's getting to the point where uh we don't want it to cause damage to our, our vehicle fleet. Um, and we've got some undulations and indentions that are problematic.
Yep. Um. I mean, now we, uh so, what are any questions, comments up here, concerns?
Yeah, I do have a couple of questions. Um, the first is uh, how, you know, what is the lifetime, expected lifetime of uh this repave? Uh, I have to get back to you on that.
Okay.
Um, you know, that's, it's dependent on factors. Um, but I, you know, I would say a pave like this, uh, if we do it the right way, um, should last uh as long as we'll be here. Um, like living, meaning, like, you know, we'll have twenty, yeah, we'll have a twenty, thirty-year lifetime of this.
And are there gonna be any annual maintenance costs for this?
Uh, you know, I, I, I don't know the answer to that either. Again, um, you know, that would be dependent upon if we cause any damage.
Well, what I was getting at is, you know, um, though, uh whoever the company is, uh, they know what kind of vehicles will be running.
Oh, absolutely.
So I, I, I'd just like to be sure that they understand what the load's gonna be and.
They, they do.
Okay.
Uh, we spec that out. Um, so, yeah, and the, these two, the, the two companies that we received quotes from really do solid work, so um, I have no doubt that.
Okay, so in the future, if, uh, I don't know, for whatever reason, you had to do any repairs on this, would, would that just be an expense?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Well, this is not really paving. I mean, this is a six-inch concrete slab with reinforcement over a cement mix base.
Okay.
This is way more substantial than your driveway.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so the idea. This isn't paving, it's a gigantic concrete slab. And I can tell you, that's pretty heavy duty, but uh, other than pressure washing, I mean, it's, it's you know, if this thing has a pothole, you had a problem, like something wasn't done right, but this is pretty, it's not like asphalt paving where it's like, oh, we gotta. Yeah, this is, this is a, like you, you know, it's a big pad. Okay, anyway, sorry.
No, those were the only questions I had.
Yeah. Um, so, uh, the next, this would, well, we gotta figure out where the money's coming from, right?
I, we will present you with a shift of funding so that you know where it's coming from. And you'll make the appropriation and then at some point in the future, we'll do a physical amendment to the capital program.
Okay, so this is not being voted on next time.
Potentially, they're just the appropriation uh in the contract would be.
Yeah, how much, how much do we save in time?
Uh, several hundred thousand dollars, I think four hundred thousand dollars.
Basically, that, that money's been already appropriated by.
It hasn't. We're, we're suggesting that you could use
instead of.
Well, it, it's, it's, it's not as, it's not apples to apples. Because for example, like, um, we may be, we may pay, you know, the cost of Dunwick out of a fund that we can't pay the cost of this out of. So what we would do is just shift funding services around. Um, and we'll, we'll tell you what we recommend that plan to be before y'all commit to this expense.
Do they have a timeline? Like once, uh, I just thinking about all the other projects that are happening at the same time. Like, how far out is this scheduled? Would it be scheduled?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
And how long it might take to do it? Is it like a week?
I don't know the answer to that either.
It's a pretty big job.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, well, they gotta flick up the existing concrete.
Yeah.
And we gotta prep the, yeah, the base. That's two weeks. I don't know. Don't ask me. Yeah, so, um. Right, so you're gonna come, so we may vote on this next time.
Yes.
Okay, so we are voting on this next time. I just always like to sort of state what's action item is.
And by next time, I mean July the tenth, not tomorrow.
Correct.
Yeah.
There is a, another hearing tomorrow night and the final vote on the village rate, so, but thank you for clarification. We're not gonna sneak it into more night on anybody, so, okay. Um, you all good up here?
Yep.
All right, public comment. Yes, ma'am.
I'm gonna say the traffic calming. You guys did a lot of work. I can tell. I'm there at the open house. You really worked that. It's a great thing. I like the fact that it's temporary. I'd like to see that you put as much thought into that, into how you collect data to be able to determine what you keep and what you get rid of. Good data will give you good results. Bad data, not good. So think about how you're gonna collect the data so you can figure out what we keep, what you apply in phase two, how you adjust it.
Thank you. Advance. By the corner. In Henry's corner. Henry's up here always hides around here, so. Um, all right, we'll see. Now I'd like to bring it back. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn? That was Lisa. Do I have a second?
I can.
Bye.